Okay.
Yep. Okay. I'd like to call this planning and zoning meeting July 8 to order. And we have a continuation of a public hearing. I'll read the new notice. The East Granby Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, July 8, 2025, at 7:00 PM in the East Granby Town Hall Hearing Room, 9 Center Street, East Granby. PZC 2503, Kirk McNaughton, Kate C., Rolling Green, Black Bear Run. Resubdivision of Lot 4 into 4 lots, 3 new lots, with a waiver of subdivision regulation 3.15.3, which limits the maximum number of homes to be served by a shared driveway to 4. This application will require a waiver to accommodate 7 along the shared driveway. The application is on file and may be seen on the town website in the office of the Building Department. Robin, you want to kind of give us a little bit of an update or where we are now?
Sure.
We've been dancing with this one for a while.
Yep. So at the last meeting, if you all remember, we asked the applicant to pick an option for his subdivision because we were presented with 2 at the June meeting. They did do that. They picked the one where they're just asking for the one waiver request to accommodate 7 houses where only 4 is allowed by the subdivision regulations. He did pay for the public hearing notice that we did re-notice in the paper as was discussed at that meeting. We did get updated plans a week ago, but they were not complete updated plans. They did not include grading and they did not include stormwater analysis. Those just came in just before 4:00 PM yesterday. So unfortunately, our town engineer was not provided sufficient time in order to review those plans and stormwater drainage calculations. I will note that we did ask the applicant to have those in a week in advance at the June meeting for this July meeting so that staff would have adequate time to review all of those because we unfortunately are at the end of our timeframe. There is only 11 days left, which would not get us to our August meeting for the 65-day extensions. I did provide you an updated staff report. The updates are in red on my staff report, just saying what was received as part of those plans from last week. And Tom Gremaldi also gave you a staff report based on at least the plans he had last week and the deficiencies that were remaining. Subsequent to those plans coming in yesterday, our town engineer did reach out to the Health Department, Kristen Kula, because there are stormwater features on the lots and grading that wasn't part of what she saw at early June. So new grading plans, there's rain gardens being proposed, different types of drainage. And unfortunately, she advised us that she has not seen any revised plans or drainage and she would need to review those as part of the overall approval for the septic systems. So just note that. You will have in your files 2 emails that came in from the public. I just want to make a note of them so that the commission makes sure that you guys read them. One was from Tyler Ball and where did my other one go? The other one was from Tammy Sorensen. So I just want to make sure that you had both of those. They're directed butters to this subdivision request. So those are the updated information that we got in since the last meeting.
Okay. Also, before we get started, I just want to read into record who's here tonight since we have pretty well near a full boat. We have regular members Brian O'Connor, John Welsh, Jay Tran, David Bresser, Tom Zissinger, and myself, Tom Durlinga. We have alternates Ryan Ray and Austin Jelenas. Brian's not here, right? He's not here. Okay. Just wanted to get that on the record. Okay. Kirk?
Okay. All right. Well, hi, folks. As you know, I'm Kirk McNaughton, and I'm here again for the application for a resubdivision of our large 21.7-acre lot number 4 at Black Bear Run. And as we stated before, you probably remember, we want to create 3 new lots, lots number 5, 6, and 7. Everything in tan here is the current existing lot number 4. And we're creating 3 new lots, Lot Number 5, Lot Number 6, and Lot Number 7. And they're accessed right now by this driveway that comes off of Rolling Green. It's a shared driveway. Comes down here, ends in a hammerhead to serve 4 existing lots. Right now, there's 4 lots, 1, 2, 3, and then there's a house on Lot Number 4. So again, Robin did do some updating, and I'm just going to kind of reiterate the same thing since our last meeting. Our attorney, Carl Landelena, he wrote a letter to the commission confirming and writing the same thing that I said in the meeting last week, which was we're going to be seeking a waiver, just one waiver, to allow 3 additional homes to be built on the existing shared driveway. So on July 1, we submitted revised subdivision plan, which you guys have, and that was intended to address concerns raised by the staff comments from their June 25 letter. And then yesterday, we received a new updated report, the same one that you had that Robin was just talking about dated July 7. And it looks like really our July 1 plans have addressed almost all of the issues on the staff report with a couple of exceptions. One item that was on the staff report was new, and that was a request for an as-built plan of the existing driveway. I don't think that's a requirement of the subdivision regulations, and I don't think it's necessary either because we're looking to create new lots on the existing shared driveway. But if something is needed, we'll look into that further. I'd like to talk about that one item that, again, Robin identified as missing, and we agree it was missing, the drainage analysis that was prepared by my engineer. We did submit it, though. As she said, it was submitted, but not till yesterday afternoon, so late, too late for the staff review. We did not give the town engineer enough time to review that. But you guys should know a little bit is that in fairness to my engineer, who, again, he submitted this info late, but in anticipation of preparing those plans that we submitted on July 1, he did prepare an internal drainage analysis ahead of time. You guys are looking for a drainage analysis. He completed one back at the end of June that was not given to the town. He did it and wanted to make his plans be done in conformance with that drainage analysis. And so he did that. He did a study. We revised the plans. You could see the July 1 plans had addressed some specific drainage. They've been changed since then, so the plans you have are, you know, they're no longer valid. But we had, a lot of times, we do this. We've addressed excess drainage along driveways and by, like, stone infiltrator trenches along driveways, and we added infiltrators for roof gutters on the July 1 plan. But before generating this very time-consuming long drainage analysis, my engineer wanted to talk to the town engineer, and they did that last week. And he wanted to talk about his initial drainage analysis to make sure that what we gave the town engineer was what he wanted. And after discussing it, turns out the town engineer requested that my engineer do the work with a little bit different set of criteria. So based on the town engineer input from, and this is just last week because we only submitted the plans on July 1, he looked at them and they had a conversation on, like, July 1 was Tuesday, they talked Wednesday or Thursday because Friday was a holiday. And based on the town engineer input, he had to redo or do a second drainage analysis over the weekend. And so that's maybe not an excuse, but he did do that, and then he revised the plans again. And we did email new plans that were dated July 7, yesterday, late in the afternoon. So not only did we give you the drainage analysis, we did change the plans based on the new criteria in order to address onsite drainage for each of the 3 lots. So you have that. Yes, sir.
Kirk, can you give me an example on the plans dated 6/30/25 that were submitted on 7/1? Can you give me an example of where Alfred Associates is showing?
Yes, sir.
Any kind of drainage improvements?
Yes, sir. Can I come up to your plan?
Sure.
I don't have that sheet up here.
No, that's fine.
But you have it here.
I just...
Okay. So the plot plans, the same ones that are up there, but they're now revised, that would be...
Right. This is the 6/30.
This is the 6/30.
Right.
But the page, the plan number...
Yep.
Has been changed. So this is the sheet...
3B.
3B.
Yeah.
And then also Sheet 3C, which has Lot Number 5. Let's look at that one. It's a little bit bigger, a little bit easier to read. So on Sheet 3C, we've done 2 things. We added, next to the driveway, I'm sorry here, I wish I had this here, but next to the driveway, you'll see these hash lines next to Lot Number 5. This is, and this says here, there's a designation next to that which says, "Stone trench to be placed along edge of driveway towards stone trench." Okay. So that was to accommodate water coming off of the driveway. And then, wait a second. Oh, right here. Oh, no, excuse me, not there. I'm looking at it upside down here. Excuse me. Bear with me a second. I'll find it here.
Yes.
Because I know that we had infiltrators to manufacture product designed to accept site drainage. Should be a little square box here somewhere. Well...
A sec.
Oh, yeah.
This rectangle here.
Yes.
Putting drain?
No, that's that dotted line. But that's the infiltrator, and there is a...
And is that also?
Yes. Yeah. So there's this. Can I mark this?
Sure.
This, and this. These little rectangles are coming off the front corner of the house.
Right.
These are infiltrators. There is a key.
Is this also?
Yep. RL roof. Yeah. That's when they're also, the roof gutter, roof discharge. So those were changes to the plans based on my engineers...
Comments from Tom Gremaldi?
No.
No.
No, no, no. These are from...
He didn't bring you guys the updated plans that he emailed yesterday.
No, I did. I brought them. I'll get to that.
The lot that you're looking at now has a rain garden proposed.
Yeah. I'll show you that when we get to it.
Yeah.
But that's not what you asked, John, right? Because you asked about the...
All I was asking, all I was asking for is what was submitted that we're looking at, which was submitted to us timely.
Correct.
At least shows some...
You guys see, all see the...
There was no drainage report. It was just the plan.
No, no. There was no drainage report submitted.
Right.
I said that. But Alfred, he did it, what I'm calling an internal report, in order to determine how much drainage was needed, and he used a certain methodology to reach that, which, again, generated this information here, the driveway and these infiltrators. And so upon consulting with the town engineer last week on Wednesday or Thursday, the town engineer asked him to redo the drainage analysis using a different set of criteria. And it's very common for that to happen because different towns use different criteria. You know, is this stormwater drainage analysis going to be based on a 100-year storm, a 50-year storm? Is it going to be based on, you know, 100-year storm plus double the rainfall or whatever it is? And they had a conversation last week, my engineer and the town engineer, to establish this is a criteria that Tom from Hollywood, the town engineer, wanted to use. So we did that. It took an extra few days to do. We were still late submitting it. I mean, I'm not saying we're not, but we are giving you what you had asked for, and there was a reason why it was late.
They asked for that in February, though?
Well, it's yes and no. Yes was, yes, well, yes and no because...
There's an email, Kirk. It's not a yes and no. There's a distinct email from Tom Gremaldi to you on February 18, which says that he needed the 100-year stormwater calculations as part of the subdivision review. So the answer is only yes.
Okay. Well, yes then, but with a yes, but with the caveat that at the time, we were talking about the private road versus the 3 individual lots on a shared driveway, and the stormwater drainage for the private road would have had a different set of criteria to it because it would have included the roadway and the drainage plan for the roadway in a bigger area as opposed to the individual lots. So again, you did ask for them. We didn't give them to you, but you have them now. So I can't change the past, but, you know, again, we're trying to give you the best, most accurate information that we can. So then, based on that new criteria, we did send in these revised plans just yesterday afternoon late, and they're dated July 7. Okay? And these are the ones the town engineer has not reviewed yet, but I thought it might be helpful, again, to take a look at those plans, too. Just like to look at the ones with John right now for the July 1 submission. And I brought, well, here's, let's see here. This is just for your records. Here's 2 full-size sets of that plan that we emailed you yesterday. And then here's not full-size plans, but reduced-size plans of the new plan, and I'll just kind of touch base on that and...
What's new in this plan?
I'll show you in a second. Yeah, the drainage. It's just the drainage. It's just the drainage.
Because I don't think anybody here is qualified to make a judgment call...
No, we're not.
Whether the drainage is appropriate for what it is that you're trying to do.
No, we're not going to ask you to do that either. I mean...
I think you are.
No, no, no. I absolutely not.
Otherwise, how could we possibly, the Farmington Valley, Farmington Valley hasn't seen the new plans yet. They haven't given us any kind of feedback or report on that. The town engineer, who's the qualified person to actually review this and give us his input, hasn't reviewed them before. And you're looking into the as-built of the road.
Well, I don't know...
But how would that even work? If we're supposed to look at this objectively and make a determination on this with, I'm not really sure how that's even going to work.
I'm sorry, what?
They're not approved, right?
No, they haven't been reviewed by anybody.
Okay. So yeah, so I don't see the point of reviewing these then if they haven't been approved.
Well, I have an idea that I'd share with you anyway.
I'll bet you do.
Well, I'm trying, you know, trying hard to do this. I mean, I'll try and make sense of it, but, okay. Go ahead. So I handed out those reduced sheets and just, I mean, I'm not asking you to evaluate or anything, but I'm just going to, I'm just putting these up here to show you.
You're expecting us to vote on it. You are.
Well, again, I've got an idea. I don't know if you like my idea, but I just wanted to show you that we have created these 3 lots, 3 rain gardens that are sized. I'm suggesting they're sized appropriately based on the drainage analysis. But I agree with you that the town engineer has not looked at that yet, and this plan has just been created yesterday, so Farmington Valley Health has not seen it either. However, I will say that for this type of drainage for a single lot, there's plenty of room to address whatever drainage issues would arise on a particular lot. All we're really trying to do is, today, is to, we're taking a, we're comparing an undeveloped lot with woods and whatever the existing conditions are to a lot that's now developed. And when the lot is now developed, you've got a roof that's impervious, you've got a driveway that's impervious, a certain amount of rainwater that comes down and hits the roof and hits the driveway is going to not be absorbed in the ground, it's going to run over the surface. And we have to accommodate that water so that it doesn't leave the site onto the neighbor's property at some high velocity or something like that. So we have to control the water that comes off the impervious areas. So there's always enough room to do it. We'll make enough room to do it. These properties are large enough to handle it. This in green is the size that my engineer determined to be sufficient, but if Tom Gremaldi had a different idea, we could do that. There's other ways. You could go back and put the infiltrators in, you could put the stone around the driveway, you could make the rain gardens bigger. There's really no, there's really no doubt that each of these lots can handle the onsite drainage. It would be a matter of what would be required if Tom Gremaldi didn't like this. So, you know, I'm just kind of pointing, I'm kind of pointing this out that this has been addressed, and I did speak with the town engineer yesterday. He did tell me he could review these plans right away. And, but there is a need for urgency, as Robin points out. So, you know, it's something that we need to address.
But the urgency is something you created, correct?
I won't disagree with that. I won't disagree with that. But, but it's all very, it's, yes, but it is all very recent because it was really just last month that we determined to, rather than going with, you remember Plan A and Plan B versus the private road versus the shared driveway and the 4 waivers needed versus the one waiver needed? So we didn't really know which way to go until just a month ago. So that's, you know, that's the problem we've been up against. So I'll come back to this in a minute, if that's okay with you.
Come back to what?
Come back to talking about the town engineer and the drainage? Or do you want to keep talking about that?
Um, no, go ahead.
Okay.
Whatever.
All right. So, we understand that we got to address the drainage, one way or the other. But I'm going to kind of change the topic, just kind of go back to the plan here for a minute and just kind of review the plan. I know we went over it, you know, pretty much in depth last week, oh, excuse me, last month. But again, at the last meeting, I handed out this map. I'm going to hand it out again, which will show where we are. Because this has, do you want, one of these, you have this, Robin, right?
I already have it.
Okay.
Yeah.
This map has a lot to do with the waiver that we're requesting, and, you know, we'll get to that in a second.
Can I just ask like a process question? So like, suppose that we approve this, right? And then the engineer comes back and says, "There's insufficient drainage."
Technically, you can't approve it because drainage is a requirement of the subdivision regs. It's one of the minimum requirements. So until you have the okay from our town engineer, you guys cannot approve this plan.
Okay. So...
Well, I was going to...
It's not one of the things you can say, "Update." Subdivisions are administrative in nature, so they either meet your regulations or they don't meet your regulations. That's the only, it's kind of different than like when you guys are looking at a special permit where you could condition something. This is not that, so...
So there's not really anything that can be said right now that is going to change that, then?
No. He said he had an idea, so I guess he could propose his idea.
Well, I'm happy to do it.
But even so, it's not like the engineer...
The only, the only option that really would be available, there's 2 options probably available to you guys tonight. One is he could ask for a continuance, and you guys could consider a special meeting within the 11 days he has available under state statute, which you don't have to do, but you could entertain.
How's it 11 days?
That's what we have left from the 65 days of extensions he has. Because of when the application came in in February...
It was on the 11.
Right. When it got opened, when the public hearing got open, we've used up most of those 65 days of extension that's provided by statute. So that would be one option.
I'm just looking at the notice. It says close by 7 to petition. And you're saying it'll be 11.
I thought it was 11. No? All right. I'm going to go with...
The close date on the...
Yeah. Close date is the 15th.
It's the 15th.
Okay. So a week.
Of...
July.
July. Right. Not August.
No, no, not August.
Yeah. Okay.
The other thing that you have hanging out there, I mean, this could all be a moot point if you guys don't approve the waiver request. So tonight, you could take under consideration the waiver requests, and if you vote to approve the waiver request, then I guess you would have to consider a continuation and a special meeting. If the commission were to vote no on the waiver request, then the application is essentially denied because he needs the waiver request in order to get the approval.
Well, in order to approve the waiver request, we would need the town engineer.
No. So the waiver request is just whether or not you guys are going to allow him to have a private driveway which serves 7 lots where you only allow 4.
Okay.
So that's, that's sort of separate than the subdivision piece of it. So you could vote on that.
And he would have a week to get the additional information.
Submit everything.
Right. With the subdivision.
Right.
Or however many days it is. Less than 11 days.
Might be just the drainage.
8 days.
Additional...
Yes. We don't know because the town engineer hasn't reviewed it.
Gotcha. Okay. And we still have to hear, we still have to hear back from Farmington Valley, too.
Possibly. I mean, we would have to have a conversation.
They would have to, yeah.
Right. They would obviously have to see it and say, "No, it doesn't affect the septic systems as proposed," or "Yes, it does." Right.
Right. And if it does, then more changes need to be made if Tom didn't catch those.
And I'm going to go with Michelle's date because she's, she's my date keeper.
Going to. Right. So it's 8 days.
It's the 15.
Yeah.
It's a week from today. Or today. It doesn't have to be a 7.
Today. Yeah.
It doesn't have to be a 7.
Right.
Which would be sufficient time for Tom to be able to review. I can't speak to Farmington Valley, so...
Right.
Tom would certainly review within that timeframe. And so those are sort of your 2 options that, to lay them on the table for you guys. I think the considering of the waiver probably makes the most sense because there's no point in having a special meeting if the waiver ends up not passing.
If it doesn't get approved anyway. Right.
That's pretty much, that's pretty much the same thing I was going to suggest, was that, you know, we did address the waiver, you know, and...
Okay.
I mean, I'm okay with that. I mean, what Robin says makes perfect sense if, you know...
All right. Would you, I mean, you leave it at that, or do you want to continue on with your idea?
Well, no. Okay. Well, I mean, I would, I mean, I'd continue on with my presentation if you'd like. I mean, my, my idea was that having to deal with the combination of the engineer redoing the drainage and the clock ticking on the time we have to approve it running out. So that's essentially the same thing that I was going to suggest. So that was the idea that I was going to have. So that kind of jumped ahead a little bit, but...
Okay.
But if you, you know, if you want, I can keep, I'd like to keep going, I guess, and just kind of make my case. But if you, you know, if you want, I can keep, I'd like to keep going, I guess, and just kind of make my case as far as, you know, I think that you know, I think that a waiver would be fair and appropriate and I think I've got the reasons here to at least lay out a good case for you. You know that I need five out of six of you to agree because it's 75% of the, of the board of the commission has to approve the waiver. So you know, if I don't get five out of six, then we're, then we're kind of dead anyway. So but that being said, I mean, I'm happy to continue because I think that we have a good case for a waiver. I think it's legitimate. We got an existing an existing driveway that doesn't really need any other work to be done to it and it's got the frontage and the land. It's a, you know, so I think
Sorry, when you say it doesn't need any additional
Yeah, I think it does.
To be done with the driveway?
What's that?
The driveway?
Well, driveway needs to be paved.
Yeah.
Okay.
But beyond that.
But grading's all there. Any drainage requirement is in place.
Yeah.
Was that all in place under our original approval, Kirk?
Uh, yes, it is.
Will we allow lots one, two, and three?
Yes, it is with one, with one exception that we've, we've talked about with with town engineer, touch base with Robin. I imagine she probably remember this when we talk about it. But the original approved driveway had the drainage was, had some level spreaders as part of the approval. I don't know if you know what those even are, where
You just explained it to me before, so I'm good now.
Oh, well. Well, no, these are different. Those are infiltrators. These are level spreaders. So
Level spreaders.
So
Go ahead, sorry.
Well, I mean, so in the original approved plan, a level spreader is like when, when it rains and water comes off of a driveway or a roadway and it kind of gets concentrated into a certain area, a specific area. You try to make measures to make sure that the water that's coming off isn't concentrated because in a big storm, it can cause erosion and, you know, turn up mud and whatever. And then that mud gets into the wetland. So it's there as a wetland protecting feature. So when we built the roadway, well, we built it as a roadway because we thought it was perhaps going to be a private road. So we built a lot of it to the town road standards. When we built it, we graded for the level spreaders. Now, these level spreaders are a level spreader is like a, how do I describe it? It's, it's just like a a wooden trough that when the water runs into it, it spreads out even in this wooden trough. It's like 15 or 16 feet wide and it's like three feet deep and whatever water comes into it, it goes into this level spreader and it's intended to overflow equally across this whole 16 feet or I think all four of them are a little bit different sizes. Some are 14 feet, 16 feet, something like that. And so we graded it all level when we put the driveway in. And as we're getting ready to do this work, I said to my engineer, well, you know, we should put these level spreaders in because we didn't put them in yet. And he said, well, let me take a look at it. And he came back to me and said, I don't think we need them. There's, you know, he walked in all those drainage areas. He said, there's no concentrated flow whatsoever. The way the grading is, is fine without them. I think you should talk to Tom Grimaldi and see what he thinks. And I did talk to Tom and Tom said, well, I'll check it out, but let's see. And he said, well, why don't you just wait until this application comes and, and I think he also said, talk to Robin. And I did mention that to, to Robin. I think you probably remember that. It wasn't a big, long conversation, but we did talk about the fact that the level spreaders weren't there and the suggestion was made to just address it at this meeting as opposed to any other way. So
So were they part of what was approved?
Back in 2014, the level spreaders, yeah.
So you should have had the level spreaders.
So which is just, so I'm gonna add on, Kirk. I was really hoping you were gonna go down that road. So which brings me to the point of my new comment on the plans, which is there's no grading of what you've done to the current existing driveway. And in order for us to actually review that in a proper manner, we have to know what the actual grades of the road are.
Is that what the request for the ASBIL?
Yes. That was what that request was for. Tom Grimaldi and I were talking about the drainage shortly after our June meeting. And we were talking about this issue with how the drainage has changed since your original approval, even over on the Peterson roadside where we, where you reduced the drainage.
Yeah, for sure.
Um, and so that is the catalyst of needing to know. So you built this driveway. You haven't paved it yet, but it's built. But you're not showing any of the grades to it that are current in the field as part of this overall plan review. That makes it very difficult for us to assess those things.
Right. But, but having that wasn't part, isn't part of the subdivision regulations or anything, you know?
Yes, actually, having existing grading and proposed grading is in fact the requirement of the subdivision regulations. Yes.
So, well, we could, that's certainly something that we can address. Like we had said before, we can address that moving forward. The, you know, the issue that we're up against frankly is that in another set of circumstances, we could withdraw the application and we could take care of this stuff and resubmit it. But in our case, we can't do that because the commission changed the waiver rules. So now the waiver that we're requesting today is no longer available to us on a reapplication. Because, you know, now, well, as you know, you changed the waiver regulations. So I'm kind of up against this timeframe where you know, we need to, you know, you know, we're up against it. We need to have, to reach a conclusion, I guess, before that's my, is my assumption. And again, these plans, I mean, okay, I mean, I guess what you're saying is that that you had wished that the topo was there for the existing driveway, but, you know, it wasn't done. It was never really raised as a question. It just came up yesterday. So I mean, we
I don't think it should need to be raised as a question. It's, it's part of the process.
Well, I don't think, I don't think that you need an existing ASBIL.
You think is different than what's required, okay? Just carry on.
All right. Well, anyway, I mean, hey, the driveway's existing. It was built to this spec in the first place. We followed the plan. The driveway is fine.
So you say?
So I say. Okay, so anyway, I'm just gonna talk about the waivers for a minute. I mean, you kind of know this, but we need one waiver. We need one waiver for section number 3.15.3 of the subdivision regulations. It's entitled driveways. And it says in part, no driveway shall serve more than four lots or parcels. So we need a waiver to allow seven lots on a shared driveway if we're gonna be able to move forward with this. So last, last month, we spoke about the waivers. And, you know, I think I'd like to talk about the waivers again because I do believe this waiver, this application is really all about that one necessity, the waiver. It's not really about the driveway, I don't think. The driveway is substantial. Base was built to the town road standards. It's got 18 inches of processed stone. It's 18 feet wide. It exceeds any requirement for any driveway that you would have.
Kirk, I'm sorry.
Yes, sir.
That driveway went in in 14 or 15?
It was approved in 14. It went in, I think, in
17, 16?
No, after that. No, more like a 2000, probably.
2000?
I'd say.
And then
If I just remember, 21 or 2000 or 21.
And then lots one, two, and three, those homes were constructed then like COVID?
Well, no, the
And then the lot four house that's under construction? What's the start date on that? I was trying to get like a
Yeah.
Oh, and how long this is going?
Okay, well, I'm gonna give you the approximate. I'm a little hard pressed to answer exact, but I think, I think the first houses were started there in 2022 and probably finished in 23, the first two. The one after that was probably finished in 24.
Did they go in one, two, and then three, or?
Yeah, they went, one and two kind of went in the same time.
Yep.
And three went in maybe a year behind. And four, maybe a year behind that.
And four still under
Four still under construction.
And then was there any clearing done?
Any what?
No, there wouldn't have been. Okay, great. Okay. The lot four, which would be the proposed lot five, to which the roadway went through, the only improvement to the proposed five would be the roadway itself going through.
Yeah, well
As, as lot four.
Yeah, lot four has been approved to, yeah, lot four has been improved to build the driveway. And, and whatever, grading went along with that and clearing went along with that.
And what's my requirement from approval of subdivision or re-subdivision? What's my requirement to complete the plan? Including, and what I'm looking for is paving?
To complete the driveway?
Complete the driveway?
Yeah, to complete the plan, to complete the re-subdivision. I mean, can it hold out there for?
Oh, you mean, when do the public improvements need to be?
I think so. I think we're still on that COVID extension, if I'm not mistaken, but I could be, I could be wrong or whatever on that.
I, I would have to, I don't know the dates of the original approval, so there's no way I can answer that tonight. I'm not sure if you'd be looking at COVID approval or not.
Whether or not.
It's at least 14 years of this
Is it that long?
You know.
Depending, yeah, depending on
Is that because of the COVID?
Yes.
COVID, yeah. The extensions that came along in COVID were essentially, they were never terminated. They got themselves written into the law, so
Right.
Yeah. I would say probably 14 years from the date of approval.
Okay, but typically, is it 10? I can't
Nine.
I can't remember.
Nine.
I think it's nine. I think there's a five-year extension.
Thank you.
Okay, well, so again, I was just saying that the, you know, the approval is not really about the driveway. It's not really about the you know, it's not, not really about the land. I mean, the lots are big. There's plenty of room to build a nice house. Welllands have been approved. Septics have been approved. Granted, Farming Valley wants to look at it again. But this whole application is really hinging on the waiver, right? So we talked about the waiver last month. You're familiar with it. You just recently amended it. But there's certain requirements that you need to meet and I just want to make sure you understood that we meet these requirements. So this is section 1.08 that says variation of standards. Says the commission may waive any requirement of the regulations by three-quarter vote of all the members of the commission. So again, that means we need, you know, five out of six to, to approve this. The regulation says that you can waive any requirement, any requirement of the regulations if you find that certain conditions exist. And I'm going to talk about these conditions that must exist in order for you to grant a waiver. And I'm going to show you that you know, we meet these conditions and that granting a waiver would be the right thing to do, given all the circumstances. So 1.081 says the granting of a waiver shall not have a significant adverse effect on adjacent property or on public health, safety, or welfare. And, you know, my response to that is that this first condition is pretty easy to meet. There's no adverse effect on any, on any parcel. The lots meet the guidelines established by zoning and subdivision regulations at the shape and size. Development approved for septic by Farming Valley.
Respectively, there, there is a problem with the surrounding lots. I mean, you have people that, I mean, not only do we have to follow regulations as, as a board, but we have to listen to the residents of town. And you got one guy here saying that you're you know, numerous communications regarding surrounding some of his property to widen the roadway. And then other surrounding people that live right there that have issues with, with everything, you know, so
Do you have a copy of, do you have a copy of those? I missed
That was the people who spoke at the last meeting, Kirk.
Well, it was an email that came in.
There's emails
You want me to read them? I have a couple of them right here.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to see them or have them.
People who are here.
Well, like I said, I mean, we, we have regulations we have to follow.
Mm-hmm.
But we also have to take into consideration that the residents of this town, that's, that's why they elected us. Have to be careful in how we proceed regardless of the regulations sometimes. And in this case, it's literally everybody that surrounds you has trouble.
Well, the, I, I'll address a couple of things. First, the, the additional land question had to do with, if you recall, again, if we went to the private drive, we had that question with respect to the 50-foot width of the road. But we've, we've passed that by. That's, that's not anything we're doing. And we ended up coming in requesting a waiver because of that. But you know, my comment to the neighbors is, and I'm being very truthful here. I've been doing this for a long, long time. I think the first time I came in front of this commission was probably 35 years ago, believe it or not. And I've been at a lot of meetings and you guys have heard the word NIMBY? You know what that means? You ever hear that before?
Sure.
NIMBY is an acronym for not in my backyard. And I've been in front of commissions and I've sat in meetings like this countless hours and hours. And I've watched neighbors come in, people come in, people come in and complain because they don't want a house next door, or they don't want a house behind them. It was fine when they were gonna buy the lot or when they were gonna move in and they wanted to live in the woods and have a beautiful situation. And then they don't want the next guy to have it, or they don't want the property owner to be able to utilize their rights. And they come in and they say, oh, gee, this is a problem. This guy's a bad builder. He's a bad guy. He doesn't do what he wants to do. Or they make up, so, oh, we use this land ourselves. We like to hike on it. We love it the way it is. Well, they all are self-serving and they really should have nothing to do with your decision because I have to meet the letter of the law.
But they literally say
To Jay's point, though, when they came to lot one, two, or three and they, you know, entered into a purchase and sale with you, they were presented with this as
A full build out.
Black Bear subdivision, I'm doing.
Yeah.
That will only be four houses.
And that's what I, that's what I
No, every one of them, that's true. See, that's proven true. Every one of them knew that there were other houses to come. Every single one of them would. And nobody came here and said
On what, on what basis? You didn't, you didn't get approval for, for more lots. You got approval.
How would they know that there were going to be other houses?
You got approval for the, for the four lots that were approved, Kirk, so
I represented to each and every one of them that I was still gonna come back to the town and seek approval. I never said I was entitled to it. I never said I was gonna get it, but I told each and every one of them, and I'm not, I was totally serious. I'm gonna come back and I'm gonna ask for a house here. I'm gonna ask for a house here. I'm gonna ask for a house here. They all knew it. Every one of them knew it. And nobody said that here at the, at the meeting.
I don't know. Did, did we hear from lots one, two, and three?
I'm not hearing about like
None of those one, two, or three were here.
There's no not in my backyard complaint. These are all direct impacts.
Well, I'm just saying that they're, I don't, I don't know what it is you're referring to. Maybe you, one of you guys could give me a copy of it and I'd be happy to address it.
He's reading from the minutes. I can see the document he's looking at. He's reading from the minutes from the last meeting. The, the woman and the gentleman who were the two gentlemen, actually, that were in the audience that spoke.
Yeah, well
That's, that's who he's referring. He's reading from our minutes. So Brad Isaac, who lives on 108 Peterson Road, Tammy Sorenson, who's at 6 Roland Green, and Tyler Ball, who's at 118 Peterson. So all direct abutters to you.
And they're, they're not saying like, this isn't what we bought, blah, blah, blah. They're stating direct impact.
Well, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure. Well, again, let me just see the, do you have a copy of the minutes?
Here.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Because none of the one, two, or three people were here at that meeting. Lots one, two, or three, none of those people were here at that meeting. So that's none of these people here. So, but you're referring to some putting a lot at one, two, and three. I mean, we're kind of getting off the course here, but I'm just saying
Let's keep this moving along.
Yeah. Well, I was just saying, people have, you know, they disguise their intent. Their intent is they don't want a house next door. They don't want a neighbor. Has nothing to do with you know, whether we meet a requirement, we don't require a requirement, or we have a, you know, a nice lot, we don't have a nice lot. I mean, I mean.
Okay, so you were reviewing why we should give you this waiver.
Can I ask one more thing? I was curious. One of the emails up, home associations. Knowing that right now, there's only really four properties that are paying into this. So if the other three are developed, that's that lower that price being divided up by more.
It would be, it would be a little bit. It's marginal.
Is there a homeowners association established yet?
There's a homeowners association for Roland Green. And there's a shared driveway agreement for Black Bear Run. It was never intended to be a homeowner association, just a It was never intended to be a homeowner association, just a shared driveway agreement that specifies how it's operated.
So to his question, there is no homeowners association for these lots that were currently established?
Shared driveway. Well, no, but they, they are participating, they are members of the Roland Green Homewards Association. But there's not a homeowner, homeowner association for, specifically for Black Bear Run. They just have a, a document that says the operating cost will be shared by the lot owners.
When we approved the Black Bear Run with the.
Private driveway.
Sorry, with the.
With the four lots.
It was not to be, it was Black Bear Run.
Yeah, and that was, and that document was approved by the commission.
I don't recall it, the creation of the homeowners association.
It wasn't an association.
But I don't know how you would do that and then link that Black Bear Run into Roland Green to that homeowners association. It just doesn't seem, because you, you've created a new entity by creating this Black Bear Run. Development, subdivision, whatever you want to call it. You, I hope on the land records, there's a driveway agreement that talks about maintenance and the like, and rights and obligations of the parties. I hope it's there.
There is. It is there.
Yeah.
It is there. It was approved by the, which is, which is sufficient.
But I don't know how you would then ask those people on Black Bear Run to be contributing to Roland Green but for the fact that, yeah, I guess they should be paying some sort of prograta share for the access out to Peterson Road. So I guess you could. Can you incorporate that? Or is it two separate entities? It's been created. It's just weird.
I can't comment. I don't know anything about it.
No, I know.
It's a particularism.
I'm just, I'm just looking at you because I haven't seen you.
So, lots one, two, three are owned. Yes. Under ownership, and four is, which is huge at one point, well, four owned by? Um, me. Okay. Well, it's in the trust, but it's essentially ours, yeah. It's yours. It's your property now. Could be sold.
Yeah.
Be sold. All right, so, John, just, just to put your mind at ease. All the documents were done appropriately legally for both the Roland Green Homewards Association and the shared driving agreement for Black Bear Run. They all are on the land records, and they all were approved by whoever approves them for the planning and zoning commission, whoever that would be at the time. I don't know who it was.
So one, two, and three pay into the HOA?
One, one, two, yeah, one, two, and three, yes, they do. They, they pay into the HOA.
There's four. You?
Yes, yes. Yeah. Okay, so anyway, I know we're kind of getting off the track here a bit, but, you know, we were talking about the waivers and the waiver, waivers have certain conditions that need to be met. And, you know, I wanted to kind of demonstrate that we, that we meet them. And again, I, I indicated that these, these lots would have no adverse effect on public health, true, safety, or welfare. And the shared driveway was already approved by the commission and it already exists. So, I mean, it's not like we're doing any more construction or creating anything new other than building on three new lots. I mean, the driveway is, is done, needs to be paved. We've been waiting to complete the paving until all the construction was done. And that's been agreed to by one, two, and three also. So, so that regulation, the waiver regulation, 1.08.2, says, well, it talks about granting the waiver will promote the town's goal of protecting natural resources, including the mena common area. But we don't really, that doesn't really apply to us, but it goes on to say, or, number three, all the following conditions must be satisfied. And it lists four bullet points there. First bullet point says a waiver has been specifically requested by the applicant. And yes, we requested the waiver. The second bullet point says, "Conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property and are not generally applicable to other property in the area." And, you know, again, I know we've covered a whole lot of territory tonight, but this point right here is really the critical point to the whole thing, is that in our case, conditions do exist within the town which adversely affect the subject property and are not generally applicable to other property in the area. I show, I gave you the map. You can look at that, where we are in East Granby, on the far west side, unique to our property and a small number of other properties. You can see on the map that we're cut off from the rest of the town by a large open space parcel that's shown in green on the map. What makes our property unique is that it has access only through Peterson Road and Granby. There's no way to access our property from anywhere in East Granby. We previously applied to this commission for a town road off of Peterson Road. Town of Granby approved the arrangement, but the town of East Granby and this commission did not. I was told that East Granby would only approve a private road off of Peterson Road because the East Granby Public Works Department would not want to leave East Granby to maintain a road like that. So, the existing shared driveway, Black Bear Run, is accessed by a private road, Roland Green. We should be able to further develop our 21-acre parcel on Black Bear Run, but that's where we hit the snag and need to have a waiver in order to proceed. Section 3.1.5.3 of the subdivision regulations, that's the regulation we're looking for a waiver from, says only four homes can be accessed off a shared driveway.
Excuse me, Robin, when was that? I can't remember. That even might predate me. Before lots off of a private.
Oh. You guys updated your regs, the last update on your subdivision regs was 2012. I don't know if that was one of the things that was updated or not.
I don't think so. I think that was, I think that predated us.
Let me see if you guys have a, yeah, you don't have a cheat sheet at the end of your regulations or changes you made. So unfortunately, I can just tell you that before our change that we made in April, the previous updates were from 2012.
So, you know, the regulations also state that any proposed street has to have an intersection with a state highway or an existing or approved town street. So, we can't meet that. Logic would say Black Bear Run should be able to be approved as a, as a private road, but the regulations prohibit that. So if we, but if we were to seek the waivers you need for Black Bear Run to be a, a private road, we would have needed four waivers. So we're saying, well, let's go this way. This is, you know, less impactful. But, but frankly, we still should have a, a method of being able to access our property. So, we feel like this request for one waiver is not unreasonable. We own 20 acres, 21 acres of developable land on Black Bear Run. We share the right to utilize our property, our development rights like any other property owner. We shouldn't be penalized or treated unfairly over a quirk in the geography of our property. And our conditions caused in part by, you know, decisions made by this commission when they withheld the construction of the town road back, back in the old days. So, the point is, this condition that we have is very unique to our property. And again, we meet that bullet point number two that says, "Conditions exist which adversely affect the subject property." So, bullet point number three says, "In the absence of a waiver, one or more of these requirements or the regulations cannot be satisfied." And so again, that's a fact. If we don't get the waiver, we can't satisfy the subdivision regulations. And bullet point number four says, "The requested waiver is a minimum deviation necessary from the regulations to permit the development of the subject property." And in granting on the waiver, the commission shall state on the record its reasons for such a waiver was granted. So, yes, the answer is yes to that bullet point.
Could you, I'm sorry, could you reread that bullet point one more time?
"The requested waiver is a minimum deviation necessary from these regulations to permit the development of the subject property." That's what the, that's the essential, essentially it. And then the, the next sentence goes on to say, "In granting a waiver, the commission shall state upon the record its reasons for which such a waiver was granted." So if you voted to approve it, you'd say in your minutes, you know, we granted it because, you know, because you met all the conditions or whatever it is you would say. So, I was going to go back and talk about the timing, but we talked about that, that, you know, we're going to ask you to take a vote on the waivers because the timing then doesn't become critical if we're not going to, you know, if we're not going to be going forward. But we hope, we hope to go forward. We hope that you guys support this. So I'm just going to sum up and say again, it's a shared driveway. It's already there. It's already approved. It's already existing. We own 21 acres, and we got the, we should have the same rights as every, anybody else to develop our property. We shouldn't be penalized due to a quirk in the geography that cuts us off from the rest of East Granby. And, you know, we can grant that waiver without causing any harm to anyone else or without creating any health or safety issue. And there's really no good reason not to grant the waiver. So I'm asking you to support our request. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Uh, yeah, I was just seeing if you guys had any other questions.
Um, I have a question. So, like, an approved hydrological report would help us determine whether or not we could have this waived? Like, we could do this waiver or no? Does that not take?
No, so the waiver sort of sits on its own. It's a separate piece from the subdivision because he's, the subdivision you act on administratively, so you would need an approved stormwater management plan approved by our town engineer. But the waiver, he's literally asking you to deviate from the standards of the subdivision regulations. So it sort of sits on its own accord. So you can vote on it. And then if you don't approve it, you can't go forward with the, the rest of the subdivision because you're basically saying no to the deviation, so it doesn't meet the regulations because there's no deviation.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I've got a quick one. I've heard 21 acres a few times. Is there any intention to keep going after these three lots right now?
Well, I would, I would say that, I would say if we can meet the subdivision regulations, you know, we could, we could try to do something if we, you know, if we could. But right now, we couldn't, you know, I mean, right now, I don't believe that we could do anything else in terms of having access to the property through the shared driveway. I think that'd be precluded. So, I don't, I don't have any plans, but that, I mean, I do have land left over. I mean, it's not to say that I'd come back, but I wouldn't be seeking that waiver, you know, because that doesn't, won't exist any longer.
Thank you.
I have a good question. I'm just trying to think if, in the past, if actually that, you know, you said Graham approved the intersection connection with their town road. We didn't because of Department of Public Works, which is understandable heading out there.
Yes.
If you were able to put public road, how would that be configured and how many lots that would be a true subdivision then? But it could be a cul-de-sac.
Well, if, it, the history is, the history is this. And it's a long and very painful history for me, but.
Actually, I don't think you really need to go into it. So the, the waiver provisions he needed for the public road or the private road, it was the one that they denied was a private road off a private road.
Yeah, but that's, yes, but that's not the, that's not the point in time that he's asking about.
Gotcha.
No, that's yet later on, I understand, because Roland Green is private, and then it was going to be a shared driveway. Then it's going to try to go with a waiver for private connected to another private.
Right, yes.
So I was going way back. I was just wondering, intention if, if Granby says approve, and we say, okay, how would that configuration look?
So we originally came into East Granby with a, we originally came to East Granby with a plan for a town road here on Peterson Road.
Yep.
Coming down here and coming in here and ending at a cul-de-sac.
Okay.
And.
So you would.
And we had to go, and, and East Granby says, well, we're not going to approve it unless you talk to Granby first. So we talked to Granby. They said that's fine. So, but then it turned out that East Granby didn't want to approve it. So after that, and maybe some of you guys might have been on board the after that time. I'm not sure. So we came back and said, okay, well, East Granby says no to a town road, but we'll allow a private road. So I got an approval for a 10- or 11-lot subdivision here from, from planning and zoning commission to come in off of Peterson Road with a cul-de-sac, ending here. And 100% approved by this commission. And went back to Granby, and Granby says, well, no, we're not going to allow a private road off of our town road. And we went back and forth with them, fighting. The only, you know, they basically said, well, you left a sues to do this. We didn't want to go to court at the time. But this is all documented. I got, I got a photo files to show you that what I'm telling you is true. And this is on the record. I mean, East Granby approved this 10-lot subdivision on a private road, and Granby wouldn't allow it. So, there's a long history here. That's, that's kind of the answer to that question.
Are there existing homes there in East Granby already?
In, well, yes, on.
Do, and they have like a dirt?
Yeah, over here on lot A and B, lot A and B.
And how they get access to Peterson?
Granby allows two houses on a, on a shared driveway.
Okay.
Yeah, Granby allows two houses on a shared driveway. So we put A and B houses on both boats.
That means you own that road or is that your property?
Yeah, I own the road. The tan, lot four owns the road. But they have, A and B have a easement over it.
Okay.
That's again documented with a shared driveway easement and an access agreement.
That's good.
Yes, sir. Paul, if Carl Handeling? Thank you. For the record, Carl Handeling, I guess since I'm sitting here, I've got to say something. But, so, I wasn't really getting into the substance of the application. I'm generally here more for process, but I'm sure all of you are aware of the Zoning Board of Appeals that exists in every town. The purpose of the Zoning Board of Appeals is to grant a variance from all provisions of the zoning regulations. Although the statute was changed about a dozen years ago to allow the zoning commission to take away or limit the ZBA's authority to grant what's called use variances. So if I'm in a residential zone and I want to start a business there, it's not permitted. If I can show illegal hardship, conceivably, the ZBA could undertake my application and give me a variance from that regulation. So, the statute was changed, as I say, a few years ago to limit that. But that's the only limit on the ZBA's power. Their power only has to do with granting a variance from the zoning regulations. There is no authority in the statute for the ZBA to grant any type of variance or waiver, in this case, from the subdivision regulations. Only you can do that, all right? Now, admittedly, the regulation says that you have the authority to decide which sections you want to grant waivers from. And until recently, you had carte blanche. The applicant can say, I want a waiver from the fact that there's a period here, or this impacts me. And, and that was the history in this town for, for probably since the subdivision regulations came into existence. I'm going to guess in the 60s? 70s? Okay. So, if, and, and the standard for granting a variance, not the waiver, you must show illegal hardship. And there are plenty of cases that discuss what that is, all right? We don't need to get into that. We don't need to get into that. But I've had many cases representing towns and applicants discussing what a legal hardship is. And should the legislature in its wisdom have given the authority to the ZBA to grant variances from subdivision regulations, in my opinion, all right, for what it's worth, this gentleman has a legal hardship. Now, that's not the standard you go by, but I think these cases are so similar, waivers from subdivision regulations and variances from zoning regulations that perhaps that's something you might want to take notice of. He's got a unique situation here, all right? He called me about 20 years ago. I've never represented this gentleman before. I've known him for a long time. When the issue about East Granby permitting something and then Granby saying no, and then Granby saying yes, and you guys saying no, I told him he had a great case and he should take somebody or everybody to court. He didn't want to do that. So I wasn't going to do that for him, but I told him he had a great case and I think he probably still does. But that's neither here nor there. What I'm suggesting to you is that the second element that he described to you shouldn't be disregarded. He's got a very unique situation and the only way that he can develop his property in the same manner as about 98% of the residents of this town can is if you grant him this waiver. So, you know, take that for what it's worth and I'll leave it at that. Now, the other thing I'll say about the process, obviously he needs 75%, which is five of you, to grant him his waiver. It must be 75% of the entire commission. So if you were, you have, I guess, till the 15th, you have seven days or eight, whatever, to hold a special meeting. So I guess he's asking you to do that for him, should you grant a waiver tonight. And if you can't get six people here next week, let's say you decide not to act on the waiver today and say, we'll give him his continuance, but we're going to hold off on the waiver. If you only get four or five people here next week, because it's a lot to ask in a week's time to hold another meeting, there's no way he's going to get his waiver. So essentially, I think everyone agrees you probably have to act on that tonight to give him a fair shot at six people voting on getting five people to agree to the waiver. And then if you do that.
I'm sorry, Carl, it's, it's 75% of.
The entire commission, six people.
Isn't it of the quorum?
No.
No.
It's 75% of the entire commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, so he needs five of you. And if only five of you show up next time, then he needs 100%. So, and I would assume, I don't, you know, I'm not.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's all right. That if you grant the waiver, I assume you'd grant his request for a special meeting, so maybe you want to talk about that as well. But can you even get a four of you? That's what you'd need next time. And to grant his application on the merits, you would only take, it would require a quorum of four of you to be here and for majority of those people who are here and voting to act on it. So if one of you abstained and he got a two to one vote, that would be adopting his, his plan. But I, I don't think any of us can expect that in less than a week's time, you're going to get a full complement. So that's the reason, another one of the reasons for asking you to take this up today. So thank you for your time.
Would anybody from the public like to make comment?
My name is Keith Lappin from Six Washington Ridge. And just, you know, listening to the, I didn't get to see the map, but I have an idea of what the setup is. And my concern as a medical provider would be that the first condition that you came, came up with is public health, welfare and safety. And the limitations, you know, I think it's designed so that, you know, we can get services in there for one, one access point for properties. And my concern would be having multiple emergency vehicles, rigs, things like that, places to turn around, you know, cul-de-sacs or something like that to, you know, provide a situation that's safe for the resident, but also safe for the, for the first responders and the, and the fire and ambulance people. That would be my first concern. I, I do, I do see cases that were, you know, granted and then overturned because of, you know, the hardship wasn't clearly defined. You know, even, even right in Southfield, a similar case. And, and, and I, I don't know the details of the history of the road, access with Peterson's, Peterson Road and Granby, but presumably these were limitations that you were aware of, maybe going back 20 years with this property. So like, I get it. I, I would, you know, if, if it moved forward, I would like to see accommodations for plenty of space for emergency vehicles, especially in winter months, things like that, so that nobody's put in, in harm's way. And that the town, I don't know, town couldn't be held liable for not allowing proper access for medical response.
Hold on, hold on a second.
Okay, do you want to respond to that?
I would like to. Okay, I just want to point out that the driveway there at Black Bear Run, the shared driveway, was built to the requirements of the private road standard in terms of the width. There's more than ample room for two vehicles to cross anywhere there. And the arrangement at the end of the road is for a hammerhead turnaround, which exists now. So there's, there's ample, there's ample room and safety to accommodate emergency vehicles. I mean, I think that was taken into consideration when it was approved as a four lots. And there's plenty of other examples of similar sized roads, even right at Roland Green, Roland Green Extension that goes in and kind of bears to the south, has one, two, well, one, two, three, four, five or six houses off of that. So I don't think that's an issue. It did kind of refresh my memory though. Something else I wanted to say was that one of the requirements of this commission back in 2014, when we got the four lot subdivision approved, it was a pretty onerous condition, but I accepted it because I wanted to get the approval, you know? And that onerous condition was we installed a fire cistern there for the benefit of all of Roland Green and Black Bear Run. The cost was over $60,000 to put that in. The fire department comes there on a regular basis, at least a couple of times a year. They check the, they check the fire cistern, they check the flow. They were there, I saw them down at the hammerhead turnaround just maybe six weeks ago. If there was any concern whatsoever about public safety, I believe that they would have raised it at the time that Black Bear Run was approved. Or if they had any concerns right now, they would have said something. We seen there on a pretty regular basis. So I don't think safety is an issue because of the way it was built, the width is sufficient to handle safety.
We also have these two correspondences. One from Tyler Ball. Hello, Mrs. Newton. I'm glad I attended last night's meeting. It was informative. Thank you. I've attached a few photos of Mr. McGoden's furthest house in the Black Bear Run development and also my direct neighbor. His house has been in this exact state since the, they abandoned it a few years ago. No doors and just a partially finished shell. There are so many points I could go into on why the town should not grant him any waivers, but this email would be incredibly lengthy. Please forward these photos to the commission if you would, so they're fully aware of the deceitful builder that he truly is. Tammy Sorensen sent an email in. Hi, I didn't want to waste all of your time at the meeting. I wanted to share with you and the board my opposition along with some history and promises Kurt never kept. I'll be unable to attend next, next month, the next meeting. I believe the reason he hasn't completed the last house is that he will have to pay the homeowners association. The rumor is it will be his home. In the meeting today, he indicated Lot 4 was a buffer for his personal property. Where's the buffer for mine? Thank you.
So to answer that, you do pay into the homeowners association?
Yes, sir. I would, I would add too that the Tammy Sorensen property, when we made an agreement back many years ago with the Roland Green Homeowner Association, we created a permanent conservation easement around her property. It's shown on the plan. If you look at the sheet, the same sheet John, that you had, that we were marking, marking in red, it shows her property and it shows this conservation restriction. I think it's 200 feet around her property, both on the east side and the north side. And if you want, I'm happy to come up and show you that, but I'm just saying.
It shows, I'm sorry, it shows on sheet one and it shows Tammy formerly Duray, right?
Correct, correct.
And it shows on the north side of property, that would be the conservation easement area A, which is the rear of the lot, which is 10 something Peterson Road, the first block.
And it's on the, and it's.
Off the Granby access.
Yeah.
And then the area which would be to the northeast corner of what's existing Lot 4, all that area, it appears that that, see, I'm not, I'm not seeing the line for that unless the line coming here, help me here.
Yeah.
Coming like this.
Yeah, that's it, that's it.
To here.
That's all.
Conservation.
This is all an easement to protect, this is all easement to protect Duray.
Why did she have to remove a bathroom window?
Your, your guess is, excuse me, I have no idea. That makes really no sense.
The only thing, the only thing that.
She said she had trucks when they were pulling through. They were at the same height as her and she could see them. I mean.
Well, I'll, I'll tell you.
You theoretically could if you were on this, from October to March, if you were in a dump truck on Black Bear and you were heading.
Out of the development.
Right, right behind the existing 10 Roland Green.
It's all wooded.
This whole area.
She didn't add curtains.
This whole area.
She got rid of the window.
So this is all, this is all conservation easement protecting Duray? And I mean, that, what you're saying is they come down here.
If I interpreted her comments correct, it was the area right in here that bothered her and then sight and light coming from here. So that.
It's all wooded. You can't, you're happy to receive our homes from Black Bear Run. And that's the, that's the fact, really.
Okay, if there's no other public comment, then everybody here is good.
Can I, could I just throw something?
Sure.
To you, Kurt? And I'm not endorsing this for any stretch, but if you could show that lots two and three would endorse this concept and if you were willing to not come forward with the proposed Lot 5 and just have it be the two lots, you can rename them or you can just skip five. And then if you could put some sort of buffer area that would extend from the conservation easement and would be on the Westerly border of 10 Roland Green, berming it and putting in vegetation as such so that it appeases the existing neighbors. I'm not endorsing it, but I'm suggesting that it might be something that maybe other members of the commission might get on board for.
Well, I'd be, I'd be okay with the berm and the shrubs.
But I would, I would need to, I would, to even, to even think about it, to even think about it, I need something from lots two and three. And I really, I just don't understand the proposed Lot 5, putting a, you know, putting a house that directly behind your existing home, your home is not small, your home is.
It's a 5, it's a 5.7 acre lot. There's a huge amount of room for a beautiful.
I realize that, but the way you're showing it, the way you're showing it and its limitations on the conservation easement as such puts it, you know, I'm not saying it's on the road. It's certainly not on the road, but I just, I don't, I never understood that lot.
Well, I should, maybe you should meet me there and I can show it to you because it's a beautiful lot. It's a, it's huge. It's flat. It's totally private. I mean, you've got no neighbors behind you or on the left or on the right. So the fact that my existing house where I live is at least 150 feet away from it across the street, I mean, that's, has no real negative impact on it. It's a beautiful, beautiful lot. I mean, it's just, would be unfair to waste it. It would be, I mean, right to waste it, you know? But I appreciate that, but I don't think that it would be fair to ask me to give up a lot. I mean, I think we have come this far to say, well, if we're going to do it, we should be able to do it, right? We've got enough 20 acres is enough down for a lot.
Certainly your prerogative, yeah.
I do appreciate that though.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
Uh, no. So you're not closing the public hearing? You're gonna, you're gonna do the waiver because if you approve the waiver, then you're gonna continue, well, maybe, you're gonna consider continuing the public hearing.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
So I'll give my spiel because I did not write you guys any motions because the application was still incomplete, but it is preferred to do any motion in the affirmative, not to assume that's the way you guys are voting, but it does make the voting easier and clearer. So a motion would be, you know, to approve the waiver as requested and then you vote accordingly to how you feel about it.
Do you want to jump down to the new business to do that right now?
I think you could just do it in the course of this because that's sort of how we talked about it, you know, because you're not going to close it. So I think it's appropriate unless you guys want to wait, go through everything else and then come back.
No, no, I think we can do that and then we can write off everything else pretty quick. Are you forming a motion in your head? You look like you were thinking.
I was thinking about taking a quick, two minute, right? Can we do that?
No.
Sure.
Can we do that?
I'm good.
Yeah, I can go to the bathroom. Oh, no, no, we're not waiting for you there. It's okay. Box down. Do you want to make a motion or you want me to?
You can go ahead.
Okay. Motion to approve 2503, Kurt.
No, I'm sorry. Excuse me. So you have to be careful because we're not approving the application or approving.
No, just the subdivision, we.
Yeah.
Right, we would approve the portion of 2503 that deals with, with the waiver to allow the re-subdivision of Lot 4 into four lots, three of them being new, with the waiver of subdivision regulation 3.15.3, which limits the maximum number of homes. Can I get a second? Can I get a second?
Second, there.
Any more discussion on that? Right, discussion? All those in favor? All those oppose? So I guess we don't need to extend the public hearing. Should I close the public hearing then? No?
No, you can close the public hearing. Just from a technical perspective, it would be helpful if you put onto the record why you were voting to deny it, just it closes the loop. You don't have to, but it is helpful.
There were another, a number of issues with the, you know, gathering all the equipment, all the various different changes going back and forth, and the fact that the town does not want to have a may, a public road that is, that they would have to leave the town to get to, I think sort of combines all of that.
We don't want to make a precedent out of that. I, you know, I know you've gone through a lot on it. I mean, John actually brought up something, maybe reduce the number of lots, maybe change someone's mind or something, but it looks like you're just, what you want to do is maximize your property. I think it might have been overmaximized. I think sticking with four probably could have been good. That's how I see it.
I see it as looking out for the current residents that are there and what their peaceful enjoyment of the property they own is. And also, you've got two off Copper Hill, there's Woodledge, I mean, there's a bunch of these developments just in my neck of the woods, where it's either three or four houses, that's it. And there's a ton of land behind them, a ton. I think the, the one that's off Copper Hill, the Verbus one, that, that runs kind of along the bike trail a little bit, but that, that goes a good, I think, 40 acres, 50 acres, and it sits. They would have definitely developed it. So I have a feeling that this could open up a can of worms by not following the regulation, never mind the delay in pulling all this together from the applicant. And then coupled with how the residents perceive everything that's going on. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I take it back off of Jay, that I think it just set a new precedent for every private road. Now you'd have, you could almost sue endless from there, you know, keep going and keep going. It just sets a new precedent that I don't think we should go down that road as a board.
To me, it just seems like we're trying to Frankenstein together something that our regulations clearly don't allow.
Yep.
Just a yep?
Yep.
Jeez.
No, I agree with what Brian just said, and that is that, you know, we purposely looked at this provision 3.15.3, however many years ago it was, we came up with what we thought at that time was a reasonable accommodation. We worked with you at that time, Kurt, I can recall it well. Mr. McNally used to sit right next to me.
Oh, my gosh.
He used to be entertained. You know, to come back at it again, just to me, just doesn't work. I feel that what we had come up with and what we had put into our regulations then still sounds like it's a reasonable accommodation. That's that.
Okay, with that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for 2503. Discussion on that? All those in favor?
I don't think so.
All those. extensions? Okay, then let's move down to the minutes. Can I get a-
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the 2:10.
Do you have any?
No.
Any issues with the minute, minutes?
Everything.
Good? Okay, all those in favor?
I have.
All those. extensions? Communications, zoning enforcement report? Nothing there. Planning report? Nothing there. Prop report?
No.
Nothing? Oh, it's summer, they don't do them in summer anyway, right?
It's like every three months, I think.
Yeah, it's not every month.
Oh, they changed that to, oh, that's right, yeah. That's right, yeah, that's right.
I'll move for adjournment.
I'll second that. All those, any discussion on adjournment? All those in favor of adjournment? I oppose.
You're on your own.